Does somebody, would the clerk like to read the notice?
Certainly. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48 in the Townsend zoning bylaws of Townsend Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a virtual, nice word, public hearing for Wednesday, November 18th at 5 o'clock or thereabouts on the application of Roger Helu, RNS Helu Realty LLC for a variance on the Townsend zoning bylaws 145-36C subsection 5 and 145-66 and appeal of the building inspector's letter of September 15th, 2020, under 145-64. The applicant is requesting a variance to Townsend bylaws 145-24C1A and approval to construct a barrier to protect the fire hydrant located within 15 foot of the edge of the driveway. Assessors map 52 block 94 lot 0. And then we give our information on the Zoom meeting. I'm not going to read that. Parties wishing to speak in support of or in opposition to his application will do so in writing prior to the hearing or at the hearing in person represented by agent or attorney. Email zba@townsmass.gov to request a digital copy of this application, which is also available for review in the office of town clerk and land use during business hours. William Cattigan, Chairman.
Great. Is there a motion to open the hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody object? Okay.
Bill, before we start, question for you.
Sure.
I'm just an associate member at this point. Do we need to have me elevated to a voting member for tonight?
Yeah, I think so. That'll make five, right?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Can you take a roll call for the record, please?
A roll call on the, on the open the hearing vote?
On the board members participating in the hearing tonight?
Okay. We don't usually do that, but Bill Cattigan, Chairman?
Darlene Sedano, Vice Chair.
David Chanel Clark.
Vicki Gianniki, member.
Okay, funny, only associate member.
Great. Thank you. Let's see, the other thing is we've got some. We got some. We got some mandatory referrals, didn't we not?
Yes.
We did.
Okay. I haven't got the right email open to get those. Hang on a sec. Ah, here it is. Great.
Now be patient with us. The, the documents are in a few different emails.
Right. The, so the referral notice now that strictly speaking, mandatory referral only applies to special permits, but I guess it, it's never a crime to have excess communication. So let's see here. We've got one from the highway department. Which is no comment. We've got one from the assessors. Doesn't affect taxes.
Good news.
Yeah, well, I mean, you never know what the assessors are going to do with your taxes. But okay, the last one, what's this one now revised? Oh, the planning board members support both the decision of the Townsend Building Commissioner and the resolution of the Townsend Zoning Board of Appeals. Okay. I don't know what that means, but I haven't seen the building inspector's letter yet. So I'm a little behind here.
Bill, I can bring up to speed on that if you, if you need, BA.
All right, hang on a sec. Let me just, I got this one from Kreidler that says, "The Board of Selectmen offered the following comment. Because it deals with public safety, the fire hydrant, we respectfully request as EBA asks the applicant to seriously consider other alternatives." And what else we have?
Bill, I have the building commissioner letter dated September 15th. You want me to read that so everybody kind of knows?
That's good, then everybody will know.
All right. Darlene, do you have the revised copy?
I have.
It should say revised on the top of it.
It says, "Application revised 10/22."
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Hang on.
There was a typo that made it a little confusing that I clarified.
Okay. Hang on, Darlene, just a second. Let me finish this, this one thing from the cons comm said it appears that an amended order of conditions would be required at a minimum. So just so you're aware, the cons comm has something to say about this particular application. All right. Back to Darlene.
All righty. This letter is dated September 15th of this year from the building commissioner to Roger Helu. Dear Mr. Helu, you applied for a driveway permit for 50 Highland Street here and known as the property, which has been reviewed by the Highway and Building Department. Upon inspection of the plans and property, I have determined the proposed driveway will be within 15 feet of the driveway's edge in violation of section 145-24C2.
Excuse me, Darlene, that is not the revised letter. You need to look at the revised letter.
Which email was?
You're not reading the right letter.
Which email was that in?
It's, it's, she said she looked at the revised application email, but what you need to do is scroll down to find the revised building commissioner's letter. Darlene, do you see it? If you continue to scroll down.
Okay, it's in that same packet though?
Yep.
Okay. Hang on a second.
Page nine, darling.
Okay, it says revised all over it. Okay. Let's try it again.
This is the brand new house on Highland then we're talking about, right?
It is.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, dear Mr. Helu, you applied for a driveway permit at 50 Highland Street here and known as the property, which has been reviewed by the Highway and Building Department. Upon inspection of the plans and property, I have determined the proposed driveway's edge will be within 15 feet of the fire hydrant in violation of section 145-24C1A. We discussed this matter on site and you suggested moving the driveway to the left in order to obtain the required clearance needed. Unfortunately, you determined that due to the site's topography, the changes we discussed will not work without substantial modifications to the septic design, possibly requiring engineering, a retaining wall and/or the removal of trees. A building shall not be occupied unless it is in conformance with Article 6 Land Use Regulations of the zoning bylaws. You have agreed to block access to this driveway with large concrete blocks unless you can resolve this issue. Therefore, occupancy can be granted in the meantime because you have another driveway to use. In accordance with Article 11 Appeals, Special Permits and Variances, you have the right to appeal my interpretation of the zoning bylaws, section 145-64. You are also eligible to apply for a variance in accordance with section 145-66 if circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography affects your property, but not the zoning, the general zoning district, where literal enforcement of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship to you and desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. That really is one sentence. Period. Next paragraph. Another option that you can investigate is hiring a contractor to move the fire hydrant. I have already discussed this option with the fire department and they have no issue, issues with moving the hydrant. I would suggest speaking to the water department before making a decision. You may need to, you may need approval from other departments or boards as well. Whoever is aggravated by a zoning interpretation or a requirement direction or failure to act by the building commissioner may file a notice of appeal to be heard by the zoning Board of Appeals within 30 days of this letter. Applications for special permits can be found at the land use office or the office of the town clerk. If you have any questions or concerns regarding this determination or need any assistance, please reach out to me or my office at your convenience. Respectfully, Eric Chatrian, Building Commissioner, Town of Townsend. And there we have it.
Okay. So this is just a case of bad luck, right? The fire hydrant was there long before the house was imagined?
Just so you know, hydrants are set up at certain specific distances, set up by the agency that oversees fire protection. Also, you cannot just hire a contractor to disconnect hydrant and move it. That needs approval by the water department or, or the public water supply of that area. I'm not sure if you guys know, my name's Todd Melanson. I'm Vice Chair of the Townsend Board of Water Commissioners, so I'm here to speak on behalf of them.
Well, thank you for coming.
Not a problem. That is, we're not inclined to move the hydrant. It opens it up if someone, you know, for a personal reason wants or needs a hydrant, wants, not so much needs, but wants a hydrant moved for a personal reason. It opens up to changing the whole infrastructure system. It's not something that you do on an ordinary basis because you have to, once you remove that hydrant tee, for those of you that don't know, the main is in the road. There's a gate, usually a gated tee that comes off and off of that is what the hydrant is. You then have to seal it and then re-town and at the, at the other point of where the hydrant is. Is it impossible? No. But it shouldn't be a.
Mr. Chair, let me interrupt for a minute, Todd. I think we're getting the horse in front of the cart, the cart in front of the horse in this one because his comments should come after we ask the applicant, uh, different questions.
Good enough. Sorry, sir.
No problem. Yeah, okay, so we've got the, we read the referrals and yeah, I guess, Mr. Helu, we, we could, we appreciate hearing from you on your thought processes here.
Present your case.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity. So initially, when we started building the house, the intent was not to put a driveway on their side. The driveway was going towards the garage and we have a garage in, in the basement for room for myself and my wife when we come up to visit. And the intent was to branch off on our lot from there, from that driveway. The way that the septic was designed created this big hill, it's flat now in front of the house, that to have a driveway there and to come down towards the garage would have a, maybe a 10 foot drop, so it's, just can't do that. So we tried to go around the septic and really could not do it with enough room to kind of, you know, kind of keep the, the leach field integral, if you want, if you want to say. So we sort of looked at different options to get to our garage and that was one of the options. So I talked to the fire department, I talked to the water department, I talked to multiple people to see what kind of options we have available. And one thing that came up a couple of times is, hey, you know, the main thing is, could you protect the fire hydrant if you backing up from your driveway so you don't hit it? So, well, I suppose we can. If we put, there's these blocks that like 4,000 pounds each. They look like a Jersey barrier, but they wider. You could put those backing up from the driveway, basically on the driveway's edge, so you could never hit the fire hydrant. And you could put one on the other side. If you're coming in, you could never hit the fire hydrant. You hit the block first. Moving a 4,000 foot, 4,000 pound block is, you, you need to try to move it. So it was an option. I said, well, if that's an option, let's pursue the option. The driveway will not be used all the time. We come up a couple of weeks around Christmas and maybe a couple of weeks in the summertime. We don't live at the house, my son does. And he, you know, takes the main driveway to the main house. So we just need this driveway when we get there to be able to access the garage. We live in Florida, so it's, it's really, you know, the summer or a couple of weeks in the summer, a couple of weeks in the winter space for us, that's about it. So I don't know if putting these blocks to protect the fire hydrant is an acceptable alternative or if we need to pursue something else.
Okay, Todd?
Just so everybody knows too, I'm a water operator for another water supply, a little bit more urban than what we are. Instead of blocks, because the only problem I could see with the blocks having is it needs, it's kind of like when you dig out a hydrant, it, it needs to have four feet of access on all, all sides. So the concern would be is being able to work the hydrant depending on those blocks. I've never seen anyone put blocks around, but I've seen them put ballisters. I've also seen hydrants that are within a certain distance of, of a driveway. A ballister is basically just a pole set in, in, of a certain size with a cement base. I think it'd be, it'd be easier for you, probably a little less cumbersome than these huge cement blocks at looking at putting ballast around the hydrant. It would be a cheaper and to me a simpler solution than moving a hydrant or putting 4,000 pound cement blocks around it. And that's the way, that's the way they're protected. I've got, I, I've got hydrants that are on roads close to a cutoff road and that's what we've done is protected it with ballaces. And, and I think that would be a better option for you guys, to be honest with you.
Well, that makes it easier to work the hydrant too. I mean, I, I can imagine trying to hook hoses up to hydrant with all these concrete blocks around it would probably be a little, I wouldn't want it, I wouldn't want people doing that when my house was on fire, that's for sure.
I, I really think the ballister would, would serve you better.
How many of them would, would be required, like three or something or?
It probably, I would say three. I don't, I mean, you could do four, but if it's just on the driveway side, I mean, two would do it so long that they were at least four feet apart. I mean, you do one at the roadside and then one, say four, five feet down the road so you can't back into the hydrant. I think that would do him much more service and protect everybody in general.
It'd be a lot less of an eyesore than big concrete blocks, that's for sure. All right, anybody else have any comments or questions?
Yeah, has anyone been out to see the hydrant and the placement of the driveway?
I drive by it a lot, but I've never noticed the hydrant. I'm sorry.
Who's speaking?
Well, the problem with that is it's literally on the edge of his driveway. So you'd be putting a ballaster, Eric Chatrian, Building Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
So the problem is you'd be putting a ballaster four feet into the driveway if you do that. It's literally right on the edge.
But how, but if that's the case, how would a cement block have protected either?
Right on the edge of his driveway. So if you have to come four feet out?
That's what the regs say on a hydrant, four feet access on either, I'm telling you, it's four feet on either side of the hydrant. So you need four feet of access to be able to put on a hose and operate.
I'm not.
But I, I, but I guess the part.
I don't know if it's physically possible.
But if, if you, so if you put one.
One of the problems is that the driveway was.
Hey, gentlemen, let me, let me interrupt for a minute. Well, losing, Bill is the chairman. If you need to speak, you need to get his attention, he'll call in. It's not a go, it's not a go-between between Todd and Eric. It doesn't work that way.
Correct.
Speaking as the clerk.
Thank you. Oh, he's correct.
Eric, you're a little broken up too. So we're missing like every, it's a little staticky.
Can you lean forward more maybe, Eric?
Uh, sure, I can try that. You hear me better now?
Could be your bandwidth on your.
Yeah, you know what, you know what else you might want to try? When you have to speak, if, if you're able to undo your video, you might get better sound just while you're speaking.
That's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, I can try that. Is this better?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Darlene, you're so techy.
Woo hoo. Done this one's a twice.
I actually had some questions, Bill, on the, on the plot plan that we provided. Trying to blow it up, I can only, I can only enlarge it so much. So the hand, the, the driveway on the right side as we're looking down on it. Do you, this, can Mr. Helu tell me what the distance is between the hydrant and the drawn in line? What's the distance between the, and the edge of the driveway and the hydrant?
So the distance is maybe two and a half feet, maximum three.
Oh, okay. I was, it was looking more like, a lot more than that to me from there. Okay. And on the plot plan itself, there, there's a section to the right of the driveway that has a number of dots. I can't blow it up enough to know what that is. Is that a protected water, water area?
Uh, yeah, that's a wetland, so we cannot go beyond that.
Okay. So I have a question. I mean, how do you get two driveways? I thought we had a bylaw that would only give you one driveway per.
For cut, yeah.
Per house lot.
And, and one driveway would have been sufficient, except for that septic system that we can't get to the bottom garage, that's all. So we have a garage on the bottom or we have a living area on the bottom, which we had to apply for and that was a permit. If we don't, if, if we cannot get over the septic system and drop nine feet, I don't know how we get to that garage, that's all.
Right. Okay. So is that one of the issues that we're supposed to be addressing? Whether, whether or not that, that driveway is, is legitimate per the zoning bylaw?
Yeah, that's actually what I was going to ask, Bill. Is, is, is the building, the driveway already constructed, just blocked up so you can't access it? Is that how the, Eric working out with you?
Yeah, so, so at this point, the driveway, just a driveway blocked off so we can't use it.
So it's not paved, it's just a.
No, no, no.
Path at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bill, if I may speak?
Sure.
Eric, come here. So this whole project predates my tenure here. I inherited it when I became the building commissioner. The project has gone through many interim and other commissioners before I got here and it's also gone through many changes in its design because originally that area that he was accessing was basically an in-law apartment. Roger modified it so that it didn't technically meet the definition of what an apartment is because it does not have a sleeping area. So on the original plans, I don't even know if it included an additional garage on that side. That being said, when the permit came to us in review, I had to deny it based on the placement of that hydrant in relation to the driveway, but it was already constructed. And that's part of the problem is that it's, it was already done and it's not right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, so the, the original plan had the garage underneath. Just the way to get to, to the garage was not through that second driveway, was a branch off from the existing driveway up on top.
Ah, okay.
But with the septic, that's what caused the problem.
So, Mr. Hill, just to follow up on that statement, and so the original plans did not have that proposed driveway? It was just, what did you have in place of the garage doors? Was just, was it just foundation or was it a walkout basement?
No, no, it was, it was a garage underneath, but the driveway to get to the garage was a split off, a Y from the original driveway.
Oh, okay.
And, and that was planned before any thought was given to where the septic system was going?
Well, it's true.
You know, that lot is adjacent to a wetland and it's a, it's a, you know, a pretty steep hill. In fact, John Barrett was, I remember him saying that they used to sled on that hill when they were kids. I guess I'm having a hard time figuring out how we got here from, from the.
Got there from here, Bill.
Yeah. It's New England. All right, well.
Bill, can I just, just, just to get it back in my mind here? So the original plans, Mr. Helu, did provide for that second driveway? But it was just going to be a Y off the original driveway? It was not going to have its own cut? But it was going to be in the same spot?
It was going to be in the same, it was going to be, it was going to be a Y of the, the driveway that's existing, not, not the one that we are talking about.
Okay. I agree with Bill. I, I can't see how we got there with, with the septic design. Usually that goes in person and place everything around it.
Yeah, well, we sort of did it backwards and then we got Ross and Company from there to do the septic system and then that's what they came out with based on the offset from the wetland.
Okay, so at the time, originally, the, the septic wasn't a factor until later on, then it was discovered the septic needed to be rehabilitated.
Well, yeah, I mean, the septic needed to be put on the front and we needed to build it up.
But at the time, all the planning, the original planning went on, that wasn't even a concern?
No, no, it was not a concern.
This is, this is Beth Faxon. I have an additional referral from the Board of Health. I wanted to know if you wanted me to read that?
Sure, that'd be great, Beth.
Okay. This just came in within the last hour. This is from Rick Metcalf, the district sanitarian on behalf of the Board of Health. And he states, "The plan does not show the location of the proposed barrier, just the driveway location. Assuming it will be placed next to the hydrant shown on the plan, I do not have any issues. If the barrier were to encroach on the septic system or associated grading, then I would need a plan showing the location to determine if any action relative to Board of Health requirements would be necessary. Signed, Rick Metcalf." Thank you.
Okay.
Bill, just to follow up on that one, is this septic location, is that where the original one was or is this a whole new location?
No, no, that's, that's exactly what the original septic was.
You just had to, you just had to refer and build it up. Okay.
Yeah.
So not to, not to ask more questions here, but so if you follow the plot plan that we have where the, the red lines are for the proposed driveway? Right after the designated wetland area, that triangle there, can't the driveway at that point go to the right and away from the, and away from the fire hydrant? What prohibits, prohibits you from taking that 30 degree turn then?
Yeah, so when, when we go to the right of that lot, of that line, that's all wetland. We cannot go any further than that.
Cause you're already go, you're already proposed going over the line anyway. That's why I was.
No, no, we're not. I mean, the, the driveway is on the edge. We did not go over the wetland. So if we need to go 15 feet to the right, that's, that's wetland now. We can't go.
Is everybody looking at the plot plan that I am? It doesn't show that.
Yes, Todd?
Thank you. So if I'm with, along with Dave, the wetland is marked by the dotted, the, the, the actual dotted line that extends out to the road, I'm not exactly sure if that's a wetlands delineation or not, but I mean, I'm looking at the plot plan and the yellow definitely crosses that dotted line at the end. Otherwise, you'd be right on top of the hydrant, not, I mean, I, I kind of agree with Mr. Metcalf that, and I think we need a better, and that was one of the things we had a problem with at the commissioners meeting. We couldn't really, I mean, it wasn't really drit, it's not a written draw, ah, drawn plan. And so it's hard to make a determination on it. And if that isn't exactly wetlands, I don't understand why it can't curve off in, in the direction to, to the left if your, if your back is to the building and, and curve away from the hydrant.
If you scroll further to the top, it's a dashed line that goes from the street, borders the wetland and goes around to the backyard of the house. There's a notation with an arrow. It looks like it's a silt barrier, limit of, limit of work.
Is that what that is?
Your eyes, your eyes are better than mine.
Well, you gotta magnify the silly thing.
That's correct, Darlene. There is an NOI issued for the project.
That looks like the same dotted dashed line that goes all the way to the street if I'm, if I'm looking at it properly.
Okay, so if that's an NOI with a silt barrier, what is to stop him? Cause that's not actually wetlands. What is to stop him from curving it to the, to the, the left or right, but away from but away from the hydrant and coming out?
Yeah.
What did you say, Bill?
I said, curving it to the east, basically.
Yeah.
That's what that's what I was suggesting. If you can do that and just take a 30-degree turn, yes, it's going over the, thank you, I didn't realize that was a silt area.
What's the topography on that, though?
No, I'm still choking on this two driveways to one house thing. I don't think that's kosher, and I'd like to find out, has anybody read the bylaw lately for, I mean, Selectman used to do driveways, but I guess that's that was the old days. Who who's doing driveways these days?
I don't know, let me look.
Well, that is.
The highway super?
Yes, and he did, he returned a referral with no comment.
I remember, yes.
Well, that part is in 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 your hands, not necessarily the waters, right?
Right. I think I think we're gonna have to do some research on this. I'd like to see it for one. And I'd like to find out about this driveway issue, second driveway in a in a single-family house. All by itself that that was not applied for, so we'd have to we'd have to fix that.
I agree with you on that, Bill. Everything else may be moot point if there is a specific section in the bylaw that says no two driveways for one lot or one residence.
Well, it has to do with curb cuts. I mean, you're not supposed to have excess curb cuts.
Right, I agree with you. That's why I'm saying anything else we're discussing may not matter if there is a prohibition against curb cuts, multiple curb cuts.
And curb cuts are supposed to be so many feet apart, too, aren't they?
Yeah, they're supposed to be, I don't know, I forget what it is.
No, it's not really a wheelhouse.
50 foot between curb cuts or something like that.
That, yeah.
At least, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd like to view this as well, do a site visit, check it out.
Is there a certain distance you're supposed to be away from the wetlands, like four, like the driveway?
Well, the the Conservation Commission has has got a interpretation when it when it comes to access. They have a 35-foot zone where you're not supposed to disturb anything. For instance, I couldn't put my solar panels within 35 foot of the resource, so, but they have allowed driveways within five feet of the resource, so for access to lots. So, you know, it's it's questionable what what conservation would come up with here.
Only reason why I said it because I was late. I didn't know if that when they read that off, was something I missed.
Yeah. Todd, you have something?
What actual lot, if I was looking at a map, like I'm on Mass GIS Oliver, what actual lot is this on Highland Street?
Oliver, wow. You should see a really massive wetland just on the north side of Highland, and this is this is opposite the cemetery, right? The newest the newest part of the cemetery?
Proposed driveway is almost directly aligned with, I think, Avenue Eight across the street in the cemetery.
Yeah.
That's Block 94, Lot Zero on the assessor map. Is that what you're looking at?
Same. Well, I'm looking at Mass GIS, which is.
Oliver doesn't Oliver doesn't help much with zoning map designations. How big a lot is it? Is it?
Three acres.
Three acres, okay. Yeah, would have to be with the wetlands. It's probably one of the larger lots, Todd, if you're.
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at it.
All right, well, I think what we should do is continue the hearing. We'll do our research and and we'll do a site visit.
Can we all go on our own, Bill, or do you want to do an organized site visit?
You can see everything from the road. I would just recommend driving by.
It's not like we have to do.
Yeah, that's fine. We can go on our own if that's what you want to do. I don't have a problem with that.
And, Bill, just for the record, just breeze through the bylaws for driveways. There's nothing in there stating that you can't have two in the bylaw, but that maybe maybe there's something else in a city code elsewhere, like you said, curb cuts or something else, but it wouldn't be in the in the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Not that I can see.
All right.
I didn't see anything either, Bill. That limited the number of cuts.
Okay. That's why I don't know where I got that, because.
I agree with you, Bill. I remember hearing or seeing something about it.
So maybe it's a general bylaw or something like that. I don't know. All right, we'll check that. We'll take a look at this relationship of the fire to fire hydrant to the proposed driveway and.
Can we ask the applicant to submit a a more detailed plan at the end of the the end of the that shows the end of the driveway and the and the fire hydrant with actual footage, not just a hand, you know, I mean, it could be hand drawn, but just a little bit more detail, see what the distances are?
Well, that leads me to a question then, Mr. Chair. If, and I know it's a possible big if, if the hydrant was to be moved, which direction would be would it be looked to be moved in? Because if it goes westerly, then it may be too close to the existing driveway, therefore it would have to go to the east. And is that a feasible location to move it to?
Refer it to the Water Department.
Todd, I would imagine if if somebody's distance to their fire hydrant goes over 300 feet, you're gonna hear about it.
Moving the hydrant was, we had talked about it at our board, and we came to the decision that it wasn't something that we were willing to consider.
Okay.
I think if you can find a way to curve that away, and I think a ballast would be a better option for for the person. And and for the firefighters in general, the idea of the blocks really kind of threw us for a loop. We had a lot of trouble reading the drawing itself. It needs to be a lot better defined if you were gonna make a decision on anything on it. And, you know, there's there's some infrastructure stuff that has to be considered that we really didn't want to touch that hydrant.
Okay, got it.
Bill? If I may, I have one more thing to add. I'm not opposed to any type of barrier there. I just don't know how it would work based on the location of where it is now and the location of the driveway. Also, just impact is probably not the only concern. There's also plows, snow, some other some other things that could occur there. So it I, you know, I think looking at it, if you guys took a look at it, you might be able to come up with stuff, you know, formulate a better opinion on that.
Sounds good, Todd.
I can be honest with you, the the plowing of it, unless the plow actually hits the hydrant, pushing in the snow is not going to affect a hydrant. And if the person whose house a hydrant is in front of in the in the in the means of self-preservation doesn't consider clearing it out on a regular basis, it usually isn't a problem. Hitting it, okay, yeah, I guess. But there were a lot of hydrants that are right on the road that regularly have to deal with that. So the the plowing on it isn't isn't for me that big of a deal. And but, you know, I, like I said, you know, I think there's a way to work around it. You definitely need a better drawing, so we get some actual distances and stuff like that, and then a declaration of whether he can turn that. Well, you guys need to answer the the question on the cuts. I think Dave said it, Dave Finoli said it best. I said, you know, once you get a declaration on that, it may make everything else mute on on this topic.
Chairman Cat again, this is Beth. If I could read one more referral from the Fire Department, the chief.
Okay.
Okay, this is from Chief Boynton. If a variance is being considered, the Fire EMS Department is not in favor of concrete blocks as requested. The intent of the 15-foot clearance is to reduce the likelihood of the hydrant being struck by a motor vehicle or blocked by driveway snow removal. The Fire EMS Department requests concrete encased in steel ballards be installed on either side of the hydrant following the NFPA standard as not to obstruct use of the hydrant. The department also requests that as part of the driveway snow removal, the hydrant be cleared to assure access at all times. Snow shall not be pushed up to or around the hydrant restricting access or visibility. Signed, Chief Mark Boynton. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We're gonna continue this?
Yes, I think so. And and I wanted to ask Mr. Heel, how long it would take him to come up with a more accurate plan of the of the detail here?
What I could do is I could either do a hand drawing, or I could reach out to David Ross and and Ed, who did the original plan, so kind of give us exact distances so you could see it a little bit better, and maybe provide us with a little bit bigger block plans.
Okay.
Alls we really need is the is the end of the driveway and the and the fire hydrant. We don't need to see the back of the lot, you know, it's just have them zoom in on the on the issue.
Okay. So do you want like two weeks for that or three weeks or?
Two weeks is plenty.
Okay.
Actually, I plan on being up there the week of December 16th, so if we need to do any any walkarounds or any face-to-face things up at that point, I'll be there for two weeks, so.
All right, so December 16th, that's more like four weeks, right?
Four weeks from now, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Works for me.
Okay.
Why why are we pushing it out that far?
Because Mr. Heel will be around in person.
It's not like we're meeting in person. They could see he's he's in Florida now, so it's not.
Yeah, we don't. I wouldn't hold up just for that.
Okay, all right.
We're gonna do a we're gonna do a site visit on our own, so we really don't need to, I mean, that's like a month out.
Yeah, okay, let's.
How about the 4th?
December 4th? Okay, sounds good.
That's a Friday.
Is that enough, Miss Heel?
That's a Friday.
That's fine, that's fine, no issues.
Who's proposing a Friday?
Your friend David Chanel proposed.
No, I did not.
We're gonna.
Back to your cigar.
Darlene will give you a virtual beer if you're if you're good.
How about we want to do December 2nd? It's a Wednesday.
I'm available.
Second or the ninth?
Let's do it the second if everybody's cool with that. So is there a motion to that effect?
A motion that would continue the hearing of Robert Heel, RNS Heel Realty LC to Wednesday, December 2nd at 5:00. Is 5:00 still okay for everybody?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody objecting? Okay, great.
Beth, is that gonna be the same Zoom login, or is we getting we're gonna get a new invitation?
You'll have a totally new invitation.
Okay, thank you.
Great, all right, thank you.
Um, let's, if I know you did the motion, but I was wondering if we should make the time 5:15, because it was kind of my double scheduling there. I started the meeting at 5:00, and the public hearing also started at 5:00, so I know that's not ideal for the board.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to to start at 5:00 and continue it to 5:15.
I will amend my second.
Everybody's still in favor?
Yes, aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. All right, so do we have more business, Beth, that we have to take care of?
Yeah, you should have some draft minutes that have been sent to board members.
Okay. And Todd, did you have something else you wanted to say?
I just didn't know if you needed anything from more from the water at the next meeting, or you're good with us, and if you wanted me to attend.
Can I can I can I ask, Beth, when we when we get that new drawing, can can they send it over to Todd so they can look at it and have a better response?
Absolutely.
If they send it over to Misty or Brenda at the office, they should, they they can get it to me. And and I'd rather have all three commissioners look at it. We were kind of all in agreement anyways. It's just we didn't want to have to post a meeting to have more than one of us attend, so.
Right.
No, not a problem. I'm glad the fire chief did said the thing about the ballast. And and I mean, the the visual on a hydrant is usually taken care of by the the hydrant flag, which comes off the top of the hydrant usually, so that shouldn't, so long as that's there, that shouldn't be an issue for him as well. Thank you very much. You guys have a great night, and if I don't talk to you, you all have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. All right, so we got minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much for attending.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your time.
And you'll get notified about the the link for the continuation.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Bye.
All right, comments. Okay, so draft minutes?
For the for October 7th meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If anybody needs a copy, I can email it to them.
Oh, yeah, this was the Amadons, okay. Have you looked these over, David?
I wasn't there.
Oh, you weren't?
I was in Maine.
Nice.
Yeah. I mean, it looks like you guys did a great job, but I don't know if it's accurate. That's.
I think I think it put in, you know, not to work on holidays. Am I remembering correctly?
Yep. Okay.
Is that is that in there?
Well, you listed Veronica Kell is in a butter, which she's not, but.
Oh, okay. Hold on a sec here.
You can fix that. That's on page three.
Okay, thank you. Page three.
She's on the select board now. But she spoke as a as a land trust.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see. Yeah, V Kell, comma, butter, suggested that the condition be amended to exclude operation on holidays. Okay, so I'll just strike a butter. Does that make sense? Okay.
That's fine. So Beth, have they done their stormwater permit with the planning board?
That was opened, and it was open Monday night at the planning board hearing, and there everything is in order. And I'm writing the draft decision for that and preparing the permit, and that the way the planning board usually does it is they'll look at the draft decision, and then they'll take a vote. But everything is in order, and I expect everything to be wrapped up at the continuation of the hearing, which is on November 30th.
Great. All right, so subject to that change, I think I'll have a motion for approving those minutes.
I want to, I just want to read this one part. I move to accept the minutes of October 7th, 2020.
2nd.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any objections?
Just have the record show that I abstained.
Okay, well, thank you.
Since I wasn't there.
Thank you, David. You're still at work, I guess, huh?
I am, hence the 5 o'clock start, you know?
I see.
Yeah, thank you.
This is my fifth Zoom. I had four hearings today and this is my this is my fifth Zoom.
Thank you.
Gets old.
Appreciate it.
All right, anything else, Beth?
No, that's it. Thank you. I think that's all we have.
So motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
2nd.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? No, okay, good. All right, well, thanks again.
Have a good night.
Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanksgiving.
I don't know who to talk to about this multiple curb cuts on a house lot.
Funny, we all we all seem to remember having something, some kind of restriction on that, but I when you were talking, I looked through our bylaws, I couldn't find it and neither could Eric. It may be in the town meeting by town bylaws, I don't know.
I'll try and do a little research and if I find something, I'll forward it to Beth for dissemination.
Actually, maybe Beth could send an email to the town clerk asking her if she's familiar with anything in the general bylaws and doesn't the clerk take care of those?
Yeah, I'll ask her, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Very good.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Stay healthy, please.
Will do.